Call to Board of Alderman Meeting, feel join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone, and welcome to the July 19th Board of Alderman Meeting. First up, we have minutes of the previous meeting, July 6, 2021, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Second.
Of motion approved, it has been seconded, are there any corrections, additions, deletions, misspellings? Hearing none, would all those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carries. We are on to outside the rail. Up first, we have fiscal year 2022 Vermont Education Tax Rate Presentation.
The only reason I would say, Mr. Chairman, that may take a little while.
That's actually.
With questions, and I think we have another folks outside the rail who may choose not to wait that long, if we could.
Excellent point, Alderman Davis. In the interest of everyone else, if you could just hold for a minute, I think we have a couple of the members of the community who would like to speak to the Board on Matters Not on the Agenda. Yes, just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Rebecca Stevens, and I live at 35 Thrall Avenue here in Rutland. Thank you for hearing me tonight. I've come to just invite you to our continuum of care meetings that are being held the third Thursday of every month here in Rutland. We meet right in the police department, in their conference room. And we are basically working to reduce the numbers of homelessness in Rutland County. We work and collaborate with service providers throughout the county, and we would love to hear your voice at the table. So if you're interested in attending one of our meetings, you can reach out to me directly at the Rutland Community Cupboard at yahoo.com, I am the executive director there. Or you can call me and I'll give you my cell, it's 802-558-6487. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the community, yes? Just step on up to the podium and if we could get your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Lori Towne, and I live at 132 Pearl Street here in Rutland City. I'm here today to address an issue regarding the use of fireworks in the city and surrounding towns that I'm sure many of you are very well aware of. I'm not sure that there is a solution to the problem, but it has definitely caused an extreme amount of stress in my particular situation. I can't speak for anyone else. This is just my home, my issue. I realize that many won't understand it or can't understand it if you don't have a pet that is affected by this. I have a black lab, and she is eight. And she is extremely, extremely traumatized to the point where she will not go outside alone. I have to take her out with me. Our yard is fenced, so we go out. At four o'clock in the afternoon, the behavior starts. And it doesn't matter if anything's happened, this is just a behavior that has come from this problem. She will start pacing, she will not settle, she won't go outside. I literally have to put the leash on, take her outside. I'm sure you're wondering, okay, so try this, try CBD, try calming collars, try sedation, try thunder jackets. Believe me, I have spent hundreds of dollars on my pet trying to help her. Nothing seems to work. So when I know that it's the Fourth of July, I sedate my dog. Or the last two years, I literally send her away. She goes to Fairhaven to whiff pack, and she spends her four days there. At least that gives her some peace over there because there doesn't seem to be as many issues over there. They happen at all hours of the night, they happen every weekend, and you know, we're talking from usually April it starts, and it goes to maybe October if we're lucky. We're talking every weekend during the week, there's no pattern, so there is really no way to know when these things happen. And as a city resident, I really don't feel that I should have to sedate my dog every single day because people can't follow whatever law there is about fireworks. I have previously, in previously, you know, years, I have called the police, believe me. I've done everything. It's like looking for a needle in a haystack, they'll ask me, well, where are they? I don't know, fireworks sounds carry miles and miles away, I don't know. And I realize, you know, they're busy, and it's not a top priority, and I understand that. I'm trying to understand the law, I know it's legal to purchase, but yet it's illegal to use them unless you have a permit, for which permits aren't given unless you meet certain criteria. It just doesn't make any sense to me. I don't know. You know, we have rules and we have laws for reasons. You know, if they're broken, there should be consequences, but yet, nothing gets done. I'm not here to blame anyone, I just, I don't know what else to do. I mean, I'm sure, I said it before, I'll say it again, I know it's not a priority for some, I understand that. But I feel like something should try to be done in the city, work with, I know, I know before this establishment was opened, and I, and again, I'm not here to put blame, I know this man has a business. That's his, you know, whether it's his livelihood or not, I don't know because I don't know the man. But I do know since it opened, it has become an unbelievable problem. So, and I know it's in the town, so I know that, you know, you folks, we're in the city, so I don't know how that works. I'm not a politician, obviously. You know, I can't speak for people because they're not here, but I know many, many of us are just beyond frustrated. I know Jane is here for moral support, she is in the town. She's met with many people as well on her end. That's really all I have to say, I thank you for listening. I don't know the answer, I'm sure you don't either. I just wanted my voice to be heard, and hope that before my dog leaves this earth, she can have some peace because it's frustrating. I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Davis.
So, I agree, I've had someone in our neck of the woods who are putting out these huge rockets that go right over your house. I mean, these aren't little firecrackers, these are mammoth. And they're being sold, obviously, and they're being sold without a permit. So, been in touch with some of the Select Board of Rutland Town, and they're trying to come up with a solution. And I think maybe a letter from this board to the Town Chair might be helpful to encourage some kind of a resolution with this business that he follows the laws of the state of Vermont. So I'll make that motion.
Second. We have a motion, it's been seconded, is there any discussion or debate on this motion? Alderman Guerisso.
I'll support, I certainly support the motion, but Mrs. Towne, I've been waiting for someone to come in. I have two dogs that bark at everybody that goes by the house, and I've jokingly said to my wife, if someone threw a firecracker, they would go right in the house, they're petrified of them. It's terrible, these brave little two beagles that bark at everybody are so scared, it's awful. But I'm also a gun owner, and I don't blame the gun sales, the gun manufacturers, it's the people that have these that are the problem. And I've gotten so mad, you can call my wife and ask her that I've gone out looking for where these guys are firing them, especially at midnight, 12:30, when we're trying to sleep, and a wife who's a nurse that has to be to work, and you can't, you can't find them because you're right, the sound carries. And, you know, going after the retailer, I know those guys, and they're all making a living and whatever, but I really wish we could find a way to get to the guys that are shooting them off, that they would have enough decency and common sense to understand people are trying to sleep and setting them off other than the Fourth of July at 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock, 1 o'clock in the morning is not the answer, and not nice for us people and our pets and all that, and that's really the problem. But if we're going to send a letter to the town, I certainly support it, we got to try something, but the real issue is.
I stated that I do not blame him.
No, you can't, they're.
He's trying to make a living, but there's got to be something.
I wish we could figure it out, because like I said, they're awful, these guys, to be that careless or that insensitive to other people. It bothers me too, I'm with you.
I'm surprised about Benny landing in the ER with, or maybe they are, and I just. Is there amateur seizing mammoth fireworks?
Absolutely, but I support the motion, and thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Guerisso. Alderman Gillum.
I'd just like to ask a question before we.
Oh, sure, sorry. Off the floor.
As you know, there's mufflers, modified mufflers, diesel vehicles coming out making noise. Is your dog also annoyed with it, is it annoying?
Unfortunately, what's evolved is when the initial, I call it a trauma, because I don't remember the exact day, the exact summer, but it never bothered her. But one summer, whatever happened to make her different? So since then, it's, any loud noise, you know, it will send her, and when I say she's traumatized, so when you think of the fireworks going off, you think, okay, they're done, she'll be fine. It is not that, because then we have a few hours of trying to, you know, whatever you want to call it, deescalate her. So you can't comfort her, she's a 75-pound black lab, she's, you know, trying to climb on her head, and she's drooling, she's pacing, and it's not easy, you know. And what I'd be here if I didn't own a pet, I probably still would be because it's frustrating, and I'm tired of getting woke up. As Sharon said, you know, some nights, they shake the house, I mean, they're just.
And if I may, I understand what Alderman Guerisso's saying, but it is people that are purchasing them, who are irresponsible and not caring, but how are they getting them? They're still being sold without a permit, and that's the state law.
Part of it.
And that belongs to the owner.
Any other comments, questions, discussion?
I think if the Chair could draft a letter of kind of support that the or Town Select Board take a position that they've been discussing, I guess, and that we support that position due to, you know, the disturbances the city residents are experiencing. And then if the Chair can sign, or we can sign, whenever people are comfortable.
Actually, if you don't mind, just one little word, the elevated amount of.
Right.
Because it does seem like it's getting worse each year, and she said that I would throw, elevated may not be the exact word, but it does seem to be worse.
Increased something.
Increased.
Certainly. Thank you, Alderman Davis. So we have a motion, it's been seconded, to draft a letter, or the Chair will draft a letter to submit to Rutland Town outlining our concerns with the fireworks in the area, as well as our support for them intervening to in any way mitigate this. Is there any further discussion or debate? Hearing and seeing none, would all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much for coming in, it's very appreciated. All right, we are still outside the rail, are there any other members here who wish to address the Board of Matters Not on the Agenda? If not, I have one letter that was submitted to us, I'll just read it very quickly. It's in cursive, so maybe I won't read it very quickly, but I will do my best. So this is a letter to the Board of Alder Persons for the City of Rutland, Vermont. The Herald headline on July 7, 2021 spoke of the conditions of the gazebo bandstand in City Park. Yes, restore it. However, City Hall is long overdue in providing handicap access to City Clerk's office. At one time, there was on the entrance with, with a ramp at the door, a merchants' row, strong zav side. This has been blocked off for a few years now. The interior of the building has a mechanism that could be described as a mini elevator. On July 2, 2021, neither I nor a clerk from the Treasurer's Office could engage it. With the assistance from that clerk, and later a clerk in City Clerk's office, I would not, or had it not been for that, I would not have been able to complete my business with the City of Rutland. We have owned property in the city for 60 years, we therefore consider ourselves Rutlanders. We would like to be proud of our city. Let us stop breaking federal law, which states, and I quote, the term "Path of travel" means a continuous, unobstructed way of pedestrian passage, approach, entrance, and exit. My encounter is detailed in a letter to the editor I emailed to the Rutland Herald, and this is from Janet Wood on 209 Adams Street of Rutland, Vermont. Alderman Clifford. We have a motion, it's been seconded, to refer to the administration, any discussion or debate on this issue? Hearing and seeing none, would all those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, I believe we are now on to the fiscal year 2020, Vermont, or 2022 Vermont Education Tax Rate Presentation. The podium is yours.
Thank you very much, my name is Ted Lamentis.
Can't help but note the irony there.
He's on Fifth Street here in Rutland, the, for one year, I've been the Financial Director of the Rutland City School District. I really appreciate you making time this evening to talk about the homestead tax rate for the coming year. It's a complicated subject, as many of you probably appreciate. I'm going to try and offer a few facts and figures to message to you what's going on in terms of the school district operations and the budget implications. I have distributed a package, I don't intend to go through all of those pages, but I have them there in case they raise questions on your part, and I would be glad to address them here this evening or later, as questions may occur to you. If I could ask you to turn to the first page, the second page, the first chart of the presentation, you'll see that this year, we've learned from the Department of Taxes that the homestead tax rate for Rutland City will be $1.64. That's a 13-cent increase, about an 8% increase from the $1.51 that we had last year, which obviously is a very large increase, and that's why I've come this evening to speak with you about some of the factors driving that, and what we're trying to do about it. And of course, to hear your ideas and concerns. One thing that I want to mention about this tax rate is there's a rule of thumb. We've done, my predecessors before me and myself, we've done some analysis that finds that the City of Rutland and the Rutland City Public Schools is actually a net recipient of outside funds, meaning that if you look at an average dollar of expenses, about 75 cents out of that dollar comes from federal and state sources, about 25% on average comes from a local taxpayer. So just to be specific for a moment, you can find on the, I think, the Treasurer's website that in the past year, the tax rate, which used to be $1.51, generated $14 million of local taxpayer revenue. Five million of that was associated with the homestead taxes, nine million of it was associated with non-residential. It's a lot of money, but it's about only a quarter of the overall budget. And I'm going to give you a little bit of perspective as we flip through that. At each page, I'm going to, before I go on, I'm going to ask if anybody has any questions before we move on. And of course, feel free to flip back if we missed something. Okay, if you could turn to Chart 3. I know this has a lot of numbers on it, but I have this here mainly to convey a concept or two, okay? And what you'll see is, you'll see a couple of rows of categories that we'll talk about in a minute. You've got what was the budget for this recently ended fiscal year, the budget for '22 that was approved by the School Board in January, and approved by Rutland City voters in March, and then you've got some changes in dollar and percentage terms. And I'm showing you this chart because in my first year of learning about the educational funding system, it occurred to me that there's a very common misunderstanding among people I've worked with. And that's illustrated by the fact that, you know, if you look at that top line of expenses, okay? You see, the budget last year was close to $59,000. We budgeted this year to be at $58 million, that's an $800,000 reduction. Now look for a moment down the page to the second to last line, the Rutland City Public School Cost Per Pupil. And you'll see that while total expenses are going down, the average cost per pupil is budgeted to go up, which is counterintuitive, of course, to most people, but there's a good reason for that, and it's why I've shown, I've detailed the lines in this chart. Because at the end of the day, the cost per pupil and the homestead tax rate is not based solely on the total top-line expenses. It's based on the expenses incurred minus federal revenues and grants, minus any local revenues, which therefore leaves over the amount that has to be funded by the State of Vermont. That's the third line on this page, the state-funded line. And that's all that the state cares about, get as many federal grants as you can, tell us what we're going to have to spend to fund your public school. So that state-funded number is what drives the average cost per pupil, and ultimately, the homestead tax rate. Now that's important in a year like this because while the good news is expenses are projected to go down, which is no small order, because when you think about the fact that medical plan costs typically have been going up 10 to 12%, we've budgeted cost of living salary increases in here, nothing crazy, but prudent. So we have more than offset increased costs with reductions in terms of staff cuts and efficiencies and some cost deferrals. Unfortunately, you see the next line, the federal and local revenues is dropping by close to $3 million. Now that is not because, not because our federal grants are going down. And I've got a page in the appendix to show you if you're interested in that detail. In fact, in '22, we're anticipating that our federal grants will go up by close to $1 million because there's a lot of extra COVID relief out there now that we're strategizing to take advantage of. So federal revenues are going up, so then you must ask, well then, what's going on? And the answer is because this line of local revenues includes not only tuitions that we get from other towns, but more substantially, we have as a district for the last several years been drawing down a working capital surplus that had been accumulated over many years. One of my predecessors of many years, I'm sure you knew him very well, Peter Ammons, was very careful and conservative and knowledgeable in his financial stewardship of the district expenses. I'm very impressed with what I see. And a surplus grew over time, a little bit every year. It got to the point, however, where the administration realized, you know, that's taxpayer money, and you really shouldn't be sitting on a large accumulated surplus, it's time to start returning that. So back a couple of years ago, we returned a million and a half. This year, we're returning about $4 million. For fiscal '22, we're going to return $1 million. But the difference between what was built in, in terms of, it's almost like a savings account, you're drawing down, but it flows through revenue on this line, the difference is about $3 million, and that's the majority of what's going on there. We're drawing down the capital surplus a little bit further this year because in working with the Finance Committee of the School Board, we've made certain targeting in terms of what's the amount of balance you need to manage your operating cash flow. Okay, so we've made an initial target at that, and that's why we've got, we've got some further working capital reduction. So that's what's going on there, but the bottom line is, as you can see, the state-funded amount is increasing by $2 million from '32 to '34 because the revenues, mainly the working capital surplus that we can no longer draw down, has dropped faster. Another point that I'm going to mention, just really briefly, and I appreciate your patience in going through this, but it's really important, in my opinion, to distinguish, and I hope you agree, to distinguish between sort of operating things and transitory effects. Equalized pupils. Somebody could write a dissertation, and I think they may have, on what an equalized pupil is as opposed to a body in the classroom. It's a very complicated formula administered by the State of Vermont, and I'll spare you the detail, but the point is, we were told at the time we were producing the budget that because of COVID, the state was going to try and keep districts whole, so even if you were going to be experiencing a decline in enrollment, they would keep you more or less in that range. The final numbers for us came out actually not at 2025, but 1980, which was down 2%, and that contributes a bit to what we're looking at in terms of the tax increase. The last piece of good news on that page is, you can see that we're still below the average cost in the state of Vermont. Unfortunately, we're a lot closer to that now than we've been in the past and would like to be. So let me stop right there because I've thrown a lot at you at one time and ask if you have questions.
Alderman DePoy.
Thank you. One of the biggest concerns that I hear, and I was in the state legislature in the early 2000s, just after Act 60. Was it Act 60 or Act 68?
68.
68 was the follow-up, right? So, Act 60, and then we worked on Act 68 to try to alleviate the stress on the residential taxpayer. And at that time, I remember, and I'm talking probably 2001, 2002, in that range, our cost here in Rutland City per pupil was only in the 55,000 to 6,000 range per pupil. So when we look at these numbers, in less than 20 years, we've tripled our cost per student. At that time, I think the state average was in the $8,000 range. So the state overall has doubled, but we've tripled. So the concern is in the city, why we've tripled our cost per student, I see Rob's hand twitching.
Yeah, we'll let him go first, yeah. But that's a great support question.
And Rob was probably around at that time, weren't you? So, I mean, Rob, if you want to answer that question, you know, be my guest, but.
There's some fundamental changes that have occurred.
Yeah, and I, and I mean, I know we get a lot of federal dollars, but those state dollars that we talk about, that we're getting from the state, are our dollars too, we're putting into it. And not just in our residential tax base, okay? But we're putting in in all kinds of other, whether it be the lottery, I mean, a lot of people play the lottery or whatever, but there's other taxes that we contribute as Rutlanders to this funding. So, I mean, go ahead, why, first of all, why are we up three times in 18 years?
So one of the indicators that's in the system that's outside of our control is that within that timeframe, what happened was the State of Vermont changed what you need to vote in terms of your taxpayer vote. So you went from voting what you're expanding locally as a function of what your cost per pupil is to voting your entire expenditure budget. When I first came to Rutland, in this administration, we didn't vote all the revenue. You didn't vote title funds, your IDEA funds, and for us, that's a big chunk of our revenue. So all of a sudden, just with that change in legislation, it doubled our expenditure per pupil. And then, in a long range, it looks like, wow, how did you go from $5,050, $500 to $1,690?
It's a different definition.
And so one of the reasons is that's a big different definition, and it hurt, in terms of the cost per pupil, districts like Rutland City, where we are bigger recipients of federal funds. It didn't hurt as much districts that were low recipients. It affected, in the biggest way, districts that have a higher poverty level because we get a bigger influx of title funds, and also districts with a higher special education rate because we get a bigger IDEA influx. And so that was one of the reasons that that came up. Inflation, of course, you know, happens, but I remember when that happened, and I argued with Peter Ammons ongoing, like, we have to do something about this because it's killing us. It's killing us to have to vote, we're voting the entire expenditure, which doesn't take into account that we're only spending a small amount of that of even state or local tax. So that's part of it, and I remember it, I was, I'm still, when you bring it up.
I have one follow-up. So Peter used to always tell us that if we vote, say we vote down the budget, okay? We're really only voting on, and at that time, I think we're probably about five or six years ago, we're really only voting on about $1 million above whatever our state education taxation is. It was about $1 million at the time, what are we at now, you know, you know what I'm saying?
I don't know, and that would require some analysis.
That $1 million I'm not familiar with, I don't have to look into.
It was above what the block grant coming back from the state was. It was what we could control as, as a city in the taxes on the taxpayer. And as I said, five years ago, it was about $1 million, I remember Peter, I wrote it down, talking about that, but if, if we voted the budget below that $1 million. But if, if we voted the budget below that million dollars, then we still have to pay in. We just can't spend because the voter-approved spending is down below that, the amount of money coming in, something to that.
The only thing I can think of is what Ted talked about, the percentage per dollar that actually is expended by the state taxpayer. And I don't know about that particular.
I've never known Peter to forget any numbers. He's been very generous with his time. So I will follow up with him and see if I can learn more. Just listening to you, though, based on the parts that I do know, it's also possible that million dollars could be the, about the twenty-five percent of four or five million. I just don't know. But I will, I'll try and find out because I am very interested in that, especially with the interaction of categorical grants.
All right, thank you.
You bet.
And by the way, this is very easy to follow with your instructions, too. It's great for everybody to see this, I think, to get a much better understanding. A lot of this stuff is, you know, stuff that even in twenty-two-plus years in the legislature and here on the Board of Aldermen, it can, it can get very confusing as you go through it. So having this to look at, I think you did a good job. Whoever put this all together, I'll give you both credit.
Give Ted your credit.
Ted, you get the credit then.
Thank you, appreciate Ted.
It's, it's a, it's a lot better to follow. It would be nice for people to see even in expanded going backward to, so that you can see what I'm talking about, about the increases in it.
Right, you know, I'm going to go, I've only gone back a few years, but you've caught my interest. And I mean, I'm going to go back further, see if I can understand that because it'd be good learning. The, the reason why it's hard for people to follow, as you would know well, is because the educational funding system, its formulas, they are unbelievably complex. I mean, frankly, I am amazed that administratively, they work. But that's another, that's a topic for another occasion. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Did anybody else have a question about this page? Yes, sir.
Alderman Clifford, then Alderwoman Davis.
Going forward, I'm just curious if, I don't know if it meets the criteria or not, but the eleven million dollars that the Fed have given, does that go to offset any of this going forward?
Do you want to start with that?
Yeah, I'll start by saying, so Alderman Clifford's asking about what they call the ESAR funds or the ORF ESAR funds. First of all, with the first ESAR allocation, we took the entirety of our allocation that stuck with the school district and put it toward appropriate expenses that may also offset what we used in terms of local funds and tax dollars this year. So a million dollars, we, we had to, we had to reorganize our structure and instruction and move teachers from one role to another. And so we're able to offset that expense by about a million dollars this year. You won't see that until they, they figure out all the books looking back, right? So that's thing one. The second thing is, ESAR in and of itself is, is pretty strict. You can imagine any federal allocation of dollars comes with thousands of pages of regulations. And so we're still working on that. But the truth is, we see it, in Ted's words, as a transformative amount of money that we can use, not necessarily to offset current expenses, but in an effort to prevent spread, you have to do, prevent spread of a pandemic, respond to what's happened or prepare for a coming pandemic. There are some infrastructure things we can do that will be really helpful in the lower end to the taxpayers. The target of those funds really has to be impacting the students for the better. And so you can't just take them and use them any way you want. But for sure, that's part of the strategic work we're doing.
Thank you.
And that's probably one of the most important things that I'm involved in. Last week, several of us, including Rob, were part of a, a working planning committee to strategize and try and figure out, how can we best optimize the use of this money within the deadlines and the definitions that we're being given? And those definitions are still shifting around. We're doing our best to stay on top of it, compare notes with my colleagues in other districts. So we want to get all those dollars we can.
Alderman Davis.
My question is, we're aware that enrollment has decreased. So what is driving, what drives the co, per pupil cost that becomes higher with a lesser enrollment? That makes, doesn't make sense.
It makes perfect sense in terms of the way you asked the question. I understand where you're going. And it's, I'll see if I can answer it with a short answer. But if you're not satisfied, give me a call, okay? So there are obviously economies of scale. Whenever you have a good-sized operation, and I can describe our district as a good-sized operation. But as enrollment declines, obviously, you need to adjust your structure accordingly. One way you can, there are different ways you can measure that. But it is important that you maintain alignment. As enrollment shrinks, you still have to provide services, but you have to reduce the support of those services. And that can mean teachers, that can mean staff, people like me, mean a lot of different resources. So it's hard for any business, as well as probably a school district, to make sure that you keep up with and keep that alignment. We're, we've worked really hard in the last year to take a look at that. And we're continuing to work on it. But if the student enrollment drops too quickly, it's possible that you won't have cut your expenses quickly enough to offset an increase in the average cost. But unfortunately, it's even more complicated than that because the state does a whole lot of calculations, which very, very few people understand. I'm, I'm peeling it back and I'm learning a lot about it. One is they make adjustments in the average daily membership or people in the classroom for things like poverty rate, whether you're an English language learner, whether you're in this grade or that grade. And so they take the number of students that we count and we give, and then they put it in a formula and they say, we're going to equalize the number of pupils. And it's that equalized pupils that they use to calculate average cost. And just the concept is, if you were to assume that the rate of the cost to educate somebody who comes from a family that has low income and who doesn't have a computer and maybe didn't have certain benefits, then it's probably going to be more expensive for the district to meet that student where he or she is, coming in for their education. You have to kind of get them up to speed in ways that maybe somebody else doesn't need assistance with. Then the, then the state would say, oh, we'll give you credit for a twenty percent increase in cost. So instead of counting that person as one, we'll count them as one point two. Well, I don't know if twenty percent's right. Seems pretty arbitrary to me. I don't know how they measure it, but the UVM study actually did measure it. And they worked really hard at it. So if you're interested, on page ten in the appendix, you'll see what the current weights are that the state is using and what the weights are that the UVM study is proposing. And these weights have not been updated in more than twenty years. Needless to say, there've been a lot of demographic changes, which is why we say, and we're advocating actively, we are underweighted, that this, this, this school district is not getting ample compensation for what we're having to do. And you can see how dramatic that would be. They'd be increasing the poverty rate by three times. They'd be increasing English language learners by two times. And these are very well-respected empirical studies by professors at UVM and elsewhere. So that's been part of the challenge, too. And that may be more information than you wanted, but it does tell you how complicated all this is. So average cost per pupil is based on these equalized pupils, however that gets calculated.
It just convinces me that this law needs to go, that it's just not effective. And it's not cost-effective. For, for a city who is a receiving town, who gets, you know, a dollar per dollar, or however that is calculated, the taxpayers in this city cannot continue to absorb these costs. They cannot do that.
And they should not.
And it's frustrating, and I'll speak for myself. It is frustrating for an Alderman who has sat here for these years and at the end, and every time we step the tax rate, who struggles to find a nickel to offset the municipal side and come in flat or below and have it wiped out by your increases on the school side. Something has to change.
If you would turn to page seven in the appendix, you'll see what would change according to the UVM study. What they said is, when they looked at the actuals for two thousand and eighteen, because they did their study in two thousand and nineteen, that back in eighteen, the district's tax rate was a dollar forty-eight. They said if the new weights were in place, the impact would have been to drop the rate by thirty-six.
So if I may, Mr. Chairman, who, who is lobbying the legislature to make this change from Rutland City Schools?
From Rutland City Schools?
Certainly.
Myself, as well as several members of the school board, are participating in what's called the Vermont Coalition for Student Equity. It includes more than twenty other school districts who are facing similar challenges as we are and who are advocating our House representatives and senators to take up this challenge and to make the changes. In fact, if there's any message that I could give you this evening beyond answers to your questions, it would be, please call your representatives, please call your senators for Rutland City and say, we need this implemented now. And remember, perfect is the enemy of excellent, right? It's never going to be perfect. And that's what a lot of people have said. We're so big, we have to look at, no, let's just get done what the study said. And at least we'll start to have some improvements.
I think the frustration is that we work with entities who are charged with bringing development, bringing businesses. And when that tax rate is there and they calculate that on their ability to do business, they're not here.
I agree a hundred percent. I understand.
Something has to change.
At the same time, I would say that you have to also balance that with the fact that if you don't provide a good educational system and a sound education for your students, businesses won't want to come either.
I, I agree a hundred percent.
So it's a hard, yeah.
I think, I think the school board has to look at structure, whether it's administrative structure. Are there too many from here coming down here? That's not a call I can make. I can only control what's in this building.
Well, you will be glad to know that this year, my first year in this position, was the first year that the school board formed a finance committee specifically focused on questions like you were asking. And fortunately for me, the four school board members who were on this committee worked very closely. And we were able to make a certain amount of progress, understandably, perhaps not enough. But we're still engaged in that. We've got the process going. And believe me, I've lived in many different areas with, I, I came from, I worked for many years in the city of Houston, which has a seventy-five percent poverty rate in terms of when you measure students getting food and that kind of. It's, it's a terrible thing and, and, but you have to fix the problem. And I understand what poverty does. And I want to get that fixed because it's hard for people to afford these kinds of things. I feel very badly that we're talking about a thirteen-cent increase. But I can look you straight in the eye and say, I worked it as hard as I could and didn't leave any stone unturned. We will find more stones and we're going to continue to work it very hard. Because if we can lower the burden, it's going to be great for the community as long as we preserve the, the educational system.
And I just have one follow-up.
Yes, ma'am.
Some of the, sometimes the chatter that has come out of the school side over the years has been, well, there's a lot of taxpayers in the city who are subsidized, so they don't pay that full amount. Well, I'm going to tell you, there's a lot of us who are not. And when you look at this tax rate, I encourage you always to look at those who are not, because that's where the impact happens.
I understand. Thank you very much. I've probably, yes, sir.
I just want to say that I've only been a, I don't know how long I've been back here, a year and a half, but the lickin' Sharon just gave you, I'll just support her, only because thirty years ago, twenty-five years ago, I was here. I fought tooth and nail with the, with the school board and Dr. Dick over building the school and trying to be fiscally conservative. And it was like, when I saw this tonight, there's no sense in opening my mouth. But I support Alderman Davis tonight. And I think you guys, I mean, you're doing, I'm sure you're working hard at it, but I'd like to see you work a little harder because it's an awful expensive part of city government that we've got there.
I agree. And I can assure you that we will all work as hard as we can, both in terms of getting federal dollars where we can and being as efficient as we can. You know, I don't like to pay a dollar more of taxes than I have to either, so, you know.
But you make more money than I do. I know you do.
Well, I, I don't know if that's true, but irrespective of that.
I know it's true.
It's not how much you make, it's how much you keep. At any rate, all right, let me just, I don't want to take too much more of your time. I do want to be responsive. Let me just ask you, if I can briefly, to just go to chart four, okay? So what this does, it just shows you in a waterfall chart what some of the different, what some of the different impacts are. So if you see on the left-hand side, there's the dollar fifty-one tax rate, the homestead tax rate from this past year. The eight hundred thousand dollar reduction in taxes, not in taxes, in expenditures that we made had the impact of reducing the tax rate by four cents, unfortunately. That revenue decrease, that lack of using the available working capital surplus caused a fourteen-cent increase for a net ten increase, as you can see. The equalized pupil calculation, down two percent, adds the effect of three cents to the tax rate. Then there are some factors that are calculated by the state, but those fortunately basically offset for the district. So I just wanted you to see the proportions. The scale doesn't go to zero because I wanted you to see the size of the movements and the proportions. And, you know, you can call me back anytime you want for a report on what we're doing because we're going to be working it very hard. And one of the reasons I'm doing that is not only in deference to the taxpayers, but also because I benefited myself from a great public school education. I wouldn't be here if I didn't. And so I'm committed also to saving money, but maintaining the quality that you have here as best we can. And that's a balance that everybody can talk about and hopefully get to a, a conclusion on that kind of hits the sweet spot. So the next page, page five, just kind of shows you an illustration of what we've talked about already. If your equalized pupils go up, your cost per pupil goes down, the tax rate goes down. And I think that's pretty straightforward. Page six, I don't mean to flip too quickly, but I just want to not take much more of your time. I just went, I, I, I gathered results for sixteen different cities and towns, either in the vicinity or I hear people talking about. These may not be the right comparables, but I thought you would be interested in them. And what this chart shows for eight on one side and eight on the other is, so the first column, so you can see for Bennington, their homestead tax rate in twenty-two is going to be a dollar forty-eight. That's a decrease of six cents. So that's what you're looking at. And, and if you go a little further across, you'll see Bennington's CLA percentage, common level of appraisal, almost ninety-four percent. That's a slight increase. But what struck me about this is of these sixteen cities and towns that I sampled, six, thirty-eight percent, do have a higher homestead tax rate. I'm sorry that Rutland City is among them. But all six also have a lower common level of appraisal, which tells you some things that are going on, which maybe we can discuss on another occasion. You'll see some CLAs that are over a hundred percent. And that's because cities and towns like Menden and Burlington recently completed a reappraisal. So their tax rates will be lower, but their valuations will be higher. And it's all about what your net tax bill is.
Alderwoman Davis.
So with, with the towns, the students that come to Rutland Public Schools, how is that tuition set to the towns?
So the state sets parameters to say, this is the maximum allowable tuition you're allowed to charge. And so they do that on the basis of data that we give them. That process goes on during the year so that when we get to budget time, we can tell those other districts, here's what the tuition's going to be. And, and so we try and, you know, we try and get that as high as we can that it's justifiable.
And do you consider that revenue?
It is revenue. It's considered local revenue. That's a really good question. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So I think I've actually referred to most of the rest of the charts. And again, I appreciate your patience and your attention. If there are any questions that we haven't covered or any questions about material in the appendix, I'd be glad to, to talk about those. I might just flag for you on page nine, we didn't talk about that, but you can see the working capital line. And that's where we built into the budget for twenty-one, a drawdown of four-point-four million dollars. The surplus had reached about eight million several years ago. And again, that's money that's taxpayer money. The district shouldn't hold on to it. So we returned a lot, we're returning another million this year. And that'll bring our cash operating balance down to typically an average of about two million. But we need that given the size of our payroll. So there's some additional data for you. And again, you know where to find me. So if you have questions, I know you can't tell, I enjoy talking about this. But I'll do my best to, to bring you some better news the next time.
Alderman DePoy?
Ted, one last question.
Yes, sir.
Working capital topic. So I don't know if this is a fair comparison, but the hospital, the Rutland Hospital makes millions every year, okay? And they build the Leahy Cancer Center, or Leahy Center, and they build whatever the new big orthopedic building is. They, they use their surplus money that they bring in because they're not for profit, they're not supposed to have a profit, so they use it, they pump it back in. We have a fantastic, probably the best high school football field in the state. We have, even though it's 60 years old, one of the best gymnasiums in the state, in Keith Gym. We have Killington for the ski team, we have Rutland Country Club for the golf team, et cetera, et cetera. I would love to see you guys work with the city, Kim Peters, you know, Tyler, you know, coming in as the maintenance guy. And do, we as a city, over the last few years, have done quite a bit with Giorgetti in fencing, in backstops, you know, that we've done over there. Is there a way, I'm a baseball guy, if you can, and basketball, I love basketball, I love football, every, but if, if there's a way to do it in coordination with the city, that's your varsity baseball field, and in talking with people around the state that, you know, have coached baseball with other coaches and stuff, they don't like coming to Rutland, although they have liked seeing some of the improvements, but they'd like to see major improvements to the field, the other varsity programs. And, you know, one of the comments I got was, when I was down in Mount Anthony, was, hey, you guys have such beautiful facilities, but your baseball stinks. And I'm like, hey, thanks. I mean, that's, it's city-owned, and, you know, I myself, the mayor oversee that stuff, but, you know, we're trying to improve it. I'd love to see you guys working on improving and making improvements and working with the city, because it is a city-owned property and getting that field up to, you know, the, the level that the football field is, the basketball gymnasium is, which has got a beautiful brand-new floor, albeit because it had to, it was destroyed, I get that, but, you know, and, you know, something for consideration to bring back to the school board for, for work on, because I think that, you know, baseball in this state used to be extremely important, and I think that especially in this area, it's really been falling off of late, to the point where our Legion team is mostly, you know, not even Rutland kids anymore, so. And those used to be the best players on the Legion team.
Well, in addition to the interest in baseball, the whole concept of partnership between the city and the district is one that we should all be all-in on, because that's where you get the synergies and the benefits. And, you know, obviously, we can talk about a baseball field, a lot of times, it can be irritating to talk to me, because I'm going to talk about cost and benefit. But then there are what you call nondiscretionary decisions, where you say strategically, this is just something we're going to do, we're not worried about the payoff. So there's always a lot of ways that you can justify how you're going to allocate resources, and we'll be glad to talk about that. I'm a baseball fan, too.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So I guess, I'm a baseball fan, too, but I guess my, my issue here is, I really appreciate this information and some understanding. I've been clear, just speaking for myself, my disappointment.
Yes.
I guess what I'd like to do, at this point, there's nothing we can do. It's, it's done, it's said, it's voted on, the state. So I think I'd like to see you sooner rather than later.
It's a great idea.
So we have an opportunity, pre-budget, to say, where are we? Not that I want to control school side, not that I want to control your budget. I want to understand it, I want to be able to comment on it, such a school could come in and comment on the Alderman's budget. But I think the bottom line is relief to taxpayers. This was a tough year, a lot of people still are not back to work, you know? And they're going to get hit with an increase, and it's owned by the school, and it's unfortunate. So hopefully, maybe next year, we can do better.
I welcome, I, I welcome all good ideas.
Right.
And anytime you want to invite me back, I'll be glad to be here.
Thank you.
Because any input that you can provide, just like the school board does, the finance committee, we're all in this together, and then we can have a good discussion about it.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Alderman Gillum?
Yes, sir.
The tech center, which I'm a big supporter of, because that's our need at the moment for the job. The tech center, is the state sets the rate for the tech center also? Wouldn't it bring sending towns in, or is that your daily, you can set the rate?
I am not sure.
The, the, the tech center sets a budget, and they have a regional advisory board that consults on that budget. Out of the tech center's budget comes the tuition bill, I'll call it, that they send per pupil to each sending school for the person they send, for the student they send, based on an average over the last six semesters. And then what we do, because the tech center sits in our school district, that building's budget becomes part of our budget and our expenditures. But that's how the cost is set by the regional advisory board, based on the actual expenses of the tech center.
So the other schools have a say in that rate?
They have people that are supposed to come and sit on the advisory board, and believe me, they speak on.
Okay.
Yeah, and basically, oftentimes, there's superintendents from other school districts that come in.
Absolutely.
Don't touch the tech center, that's doing...
Oh, it's excellent, excellent.
It's one of our tools.
You get no argument here, I'm with you.
We're very fortunate to have an outstanding director in Melissa Conner there.
Art Crowley, all I think of, you love that text, makes me think of Art Crowley.
Alderman Russo?
All that's going on in the world, did they take Senator Stafford's name off it?
No, I don't believe so.
Well, no, I never was called Stafford Technical Senator, and he's called it Tech Center, and, and I...
Stafford Technical Center.
Stafford Technical Center, okay, I didn't know, I was worried, nobody called it Stafford Technical Center, I didn't know if I missed something, because it was Senator Stafford was who it was named after.
Right, correct.
Not only a close personal friend, my dad's attorney, so, thank you.
If I could, guys, I do have one question before you go. First of all, thank you for being here and doing this presentation, it's very appreciated. Uh, I'm going back to the concept of the equalized pupil. You know, I'm thinking in the healthcare terms, that's very similar to, you know, a physician's panel, a weighted panel, in which you rate patients by the degree to which, of how complicated they are to take care of, you know, so how healthy to how sick that you may be. When I look at these numbers, a concern that sort of arose for me is that it, it's not necessarily just, you know, in the healthcare terms, the patients are getting sicker, or in the case of education, that we may be seeing increased poverty. I would see it as healthy patients are leaving the clinic and going somewhere else. And I'm concerned, are we seeing an outflux of students who are high performers, who come from homes with a lot of resources, that, that would help to offset, as well as help to bring up their peers, just by the nature of being in the classroom? And if that is the case, what are we doing with it? Because I worry that this could be a downward spiral if we keep losing these students while, you know, very justifiably working to help those who are arriving in poverty.
Do we have any of those metrics yet?
Yeah, so the only thing I'll say about that is, if you look at, two things to talk about that, we're all concerned, we all have high-performing students, students with real interest. And the, the two metrics that I would cite, and I cannot cite you the exact number, but I will tell you that Rutland High School is still a school of choice, where you see, we have a waiting list of students to get in on the universal school choice law, right? We are still a school of choice for surrounding towns, and most of their kids come to us. With that, that's one metric. The other metric that I would cite is the general decline in population in Rutland County. You can't, if, if you look at decline in population by county across the state over the last, I will say, 10 to 15 years, you'll see that the decline in Rutland County is accelerated beyond almost every county, I think there might be one or two that, that are declining faster than we are. So anything we do as a district and, and as a community, to say like, look, this really is a great place to live. And over the last year or so with the pandemic, we get a lot of people, as you know, real estate's hot, but we do get a lot of people who want to come in and say like, hey, how can I come and be a part of this place? That's a real plus. So those are the only two metrics that I have for that. I, I could look into, you know, anything else you want to mention.
I appreciate that, Rob, thank you.
What is, what is your pupil right now? I'm seeing 798 on niche.
For the high school.
Yeah, 9 through 12.
I would say 798 is low.
Yeah, I thought it was more...
I thought we were, I thought we were 890.
I thought it was in the eights also. I've seen, I've seen different enrollment numbers on different websites. It's interesting you mention that.
I carry it on my, on my computer.
I use the report that, that Betty provides.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? If not?
I enjoyed getting to meet you, and I look forward to working with you. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right, we are still technically outside the rail. I'll give one last call for anyone who wishes to address the board on matters not on the agenda. Hearing and seeing none, we are on to communications from the mayor, Mayor LaRue.
Okay, very good, thank you very much. We are at 8 o'clock, so I will try to keep it as short as possible, if I could. I do have two or three things I want to bring up tonight. The first one is the item on your agenda under mayoral appointment, DPW Commissioner. I have a memo that I had sent regarding my recommendation of Jim Rotondo as the Department of Public Works Commissioner. Jim, as you all know, has been doing a great job in the interim role. He has now expressed an interest in being in the permanent position, and he has my full trust and support. So with that, I would like to ask, as is the protocol, to have you table the nomination to the next meeting.
I'll move second.
We have a motion table, it's been seconded. All those in favor of tabling Jim Rotondo's appointment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Alderman DePoy, did you have a comment on this first?
Well, I got superseded by the motion that was made. I was going to make a motion to suspend our rules and take the issue up tonight.
Well, can you? Can you waive the charter, can you vote to waive the charter?
It's in, it's in...
Oh, you already asked him?
I wanted to do it with the fire chief, you guys wouldn't let me, but he's been here, too, for a long time, I don't know why we can't.
All right, we're moving on.
Certainly appreciate.
So moving along, second, I had mentioned to this group, I think at the last meeting, that I'd planned on putting together a public meeting. I actually have got a tentative date to gather, this is to gather input and recommendations from the public on how the city should spend the ARPA funds, which we will, the last I knew was going to be still in the range of $4.4 million. We have yet to see it, but it come in two tranches. I have scheduled that meeting for Wednesday, August 11th. That still gives people plenty of time to plan. It's going to be at 7 o'clock, and we're going to hold that at the Rutland Recreation Community Center down at the former College of St. Joseph's campus. I want to encourage any and all folks here tonight and at home, if you have any ideas or suggestions, to come along that evening and voice them to us, or send them along via email to, to my email address, or give me a call, and we will gladly entertain those ideas. So again, that is Wednesday, the 11th, at 7 o'clock, 11th of August, down at the Rutland Recreation Community Center. That'll be an important meeting. A couple of just quick things, as you know, today, Amtrak service kicked off once again this morning. We had a well-attended ceremony down at the train station. We had food, festivities, and a short trip to Castleton. The turnout was excellent, the media was present, appreciate them coming. It's a big day for the city of Rutland, and I believe for our whole region to have Amtrak train service returned. And lastly, there was a article in the paper the other day telling us that the Federal Department of Transportation, DOT, has awarded the Cape Air to continue passenger air service from Rutland down to Boston. They chose the current schedule, which is three trips a day. That will go for the next two years. It'll begin November 1st of this year and run for two years. Again, that's another good piece of information, or good piece of news for us in the transportation arena, and will help us in recruiting, hopefully, new businesses to the Rutland region. So with that, that's what I have tonight.
Thank you, Mayor LaRue. Any questions for the mayor? Thank you again.
Yeah, thank you very much.
All right, we are on to additions and deletions to the agenda. Attorney Blumer, any deletions?
Uh, one deletion, the labor relations executive session isn't necessary tonight.
They died of old age waiting.
That's a good piece of information.
Very good. All right, then we are on to reports, letters from department heads and officials. First, interim Commissioner Rotondo requests to set a public meeting, although I do not believe he is with us this evening.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second. We have a motion to suspend, it's been seconded. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
And I'll move to schedule a public meeting on August 2nd at 6:30 PM to discuss the long-term control plan for the CSO abatement.
Second. Right, we have a motion that has been seconded. Any discussion, debate, questions? Hearing and seeing none, would all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, up next, we have Brennan Duffy, IRA Director, buy-off grant request, page three. I do not believe Brennan, nor, Barbara's here, so Alderman Dungus.
Great, thank you very much. So this week, the IRA reviewed, the IRA board reviewed an application for the buy-up funding from Diamonds and More. The applicant was determined to meet the eligibility criteria for the buy-up program. Diamonds and More, the applicant, Ivan Rochon, is planning to make substantial investment in his existing business at 7th Center Street. Plans include spending approximately $30,000 to replace existing windows, which will improve the facade appearance and energy efficiency of the building. The applicant is requesting a $5,000 grant from buy-up program to help offset some of the renovation cost. The IRA board recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the $5,000 of the buy-up grant.
Still moved. I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second. We have a motion to suspend the rules, it's been seconded. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
And I'll move the, approve the recommendation for the $5,000 buy-up grant to Diamonds and More.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that has been seconded. Is there any discussion, debate, questions on the buy-off grant request? Hearing and seeing none, would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank Alderman Dungus. Up next, Treasurer Markowski, treasurer's report, June 30th, 2021. This was emailed to all of us.
Hi, June 30 is preliminary, we're still doing a lot of adjustments, so I really focused much of my time on general fund and the tax rate. So I know there's a lot of information, I don't know, I know we need to get to the tax rate. Were there any specific questions you had in the financials? There was an awful lot, I provided some summary, summary detail, just outlining how, how individual departments performed, revenues, expenses, we had some big numbers come from some departments, and you'll see that reflected when we're looking at the tax rate. So generally, with the quarterly reports, we would review them in finance committee, if you'd like to move that there, or if you have questions tonight.
I'll, Mr. Chairman, I'll move to refer to the finance committee.
Second. We have a motion to refer, and it has been seconded. Would all those in favor of referring this to the finance committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Are there any questions for Treasurer Markowski tonight on this matter? Treasurer Markowski, I think you're off the hook.
Thank you.
All right, well, we'll move Attorney Blumer to the end with his executive sessions. So up next, we have reports of standing committees. We have none, reports of select committees, we have none, reports of representatives, we have none, petitions, letters, miscellaneous communication. We have a special event permit request, art in the park, August and October events for Main Street Park, pages four through 12 of your packet. Alderman Davis?
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second. We have a motion to suspend the rules, it has been seconded. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
And reviewing both of them, Mr. Chairman, or is one at a time?
One at a time, or?
You can do both. Do both. So I'll move to approve both requests for art in the park, the first for August 14th and 15th, and the second for October 9th and 10th, to be held in Main Street Park from 10 AM to 6 PM on Saturday, and 10 AM to 4 PM on Sunday.
Second.
We have a motion that has been seconded to approve the art in the park requests. Any discussion, debate, questions? Hearing and seeing none, would all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We are now on to Board of Control Commissioners, of which we have nothing. That brings us to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before the board? There is none. We are on to miscellaneous motions, resolutions, new business. Welcome back, Treasurer Markowski.
Okay, so I provided quite a bit of information on the tax rate, but I did want to go over some of the highlights. We had the presentation on the education rate, and you can see where that is really impacting impacting our rate this year, the increases in that tax rate. But I will speak to the municipal rate and how we arrived at those numbers. The first item is the general fund appropriations. And I just wanted to note, we're dealing with a, the budget, the city budget, up $148,000. allocations to social agencies of $8,400 and debt service of $600, up $67,000. So we have overall, we're looking for, we need to raise funds for $23.2 million. So having said that, then we look to our other revenue sources other than property tax. So we work with all departments. What do you anticipate for FY '22? That you will see, last year, we really were concerned with COVID. What are our revenue streams? We have a lot of unknowns. So this year, we're up $288,000, so that gives a nice number to offset. I'm gonna skip down to transfers. We have transfers regularly from the proprietary funds for work in the general fund. So 1.5 million. And then we have a surplus. We ended the year well with a surplus. We had, if, in looking at the June 30 financials, you'll see like the police department, we all know they've been struggling staffing, so they ended up with a surplus of $700,000 in staffing that, to the bottom line. The Department of Public Works had significant savings. We had anticipated not spending paving. So we ended up overall with a surplus of $837,000, which I proposed that we apply toward this tax rate. There are a number of things that go into that, so I had outlined, first of all, if you approve of the recommendation that I made, we would first need to approve a $60,000, I would ask the Board, I would recommend a transfer to the bridge fund of $60,000. This is unspent money allocated to bridge construction. This was how the bridge capital fund was initially designed, funding source. So that would be up to the Board. We look at this every year. It's really up to the Board. Do you want to go ahead and transfer that $60,000 this year or do you want to hold?
Can I back up a little? I got a question.
Oh, sure.
Did you say the police department had like $700,000?
Yes, when I looked at their numbers, from salary line to workers' comp, $700,000.
No, then you said DPW had like $600?
Uh, they, theirs was, hold on, I have it.
Roughly, Mary, roughly. I don't want to hold you to it. I'm just saying roughly.
No, I did have it here, $758.
Okay, so seven and seven, you said it's $1.4 million, but you said we ended up with a surplus of seven, so somebody came up short.
We had some falling short. So we had excess revenues, which was great. We had, we had a lot of expenses unspent, but remember, we had budgeted a budgetary loss of $823 when we said we're not going to spend part of what we appropriated last year.
Okay.
So those three numbers together get that, the surplus that we have.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I got you.
Yeah, and there were some offsetting departments. You're correct on that and grants, unbudgeted grants, expenses offset on the revenue side, but that's not.
It's still nice to have one, but I just was curious what I missed, that's all.
No, no, you didn't miss that. That was in there, yeah.
Thank you, thank you. So you want your?
That was kind of my question, because in your email, you state actual expense around the budgeting resulting in a surplus of $993.
Okay, so the surplus is $993 when we're looking at it on July 16th. We say if we stopped everything right now, but then we have to, in the treasurer's office, we're forecasting what other expenses are coming in, what other revenues and making those, that's where that fund balance is a little, the adjustments to fund balance. You'll see, I think it was the second schedule that I had. So that's where there's a detailed schedule on how we calculate that fund balance, making the adjustments that we had.
And I believe there was a motion on the floor for a transfer or there was a request for a motion.
Treasurer Markowski, would you restate that request, please?
Okay, so I would recommend Board approval of a transfer of $60,000 from general fund to the bridge capital fund.
I'll move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that has been seconded. Is there any questions, discussion? If not, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. And then the next item, this was again in where, you know, the fund balance, that's the most complicated part of this, of coming up with that. Again, looking, I would recommend and ask for the Board's approval of a transfer of $16,880.29 from the general fund to the sidewalk capital fund. Again, unspent, that was unspent funds in the concrete precast line.
Alderman DePoy.
Mary, do these affect the $837 number that you have, that you gave us?
That's how I arrived at the $837. I made those adjustments in hoping that you would approve them. If you don't, we'll.
So after these transfers are done, that's how we get to the $837? Gotcha, thank you.
Yep.
Not only, not on this. So we have a motion that has been seconded. Any discussion, debate, questions? If not, Mary, will you restate that number one more time?
Okay, requesting Board approval of a transfer of $16,880.29 from general fund to the sidewalk capital fund.
Excellent. So we have a motion, it's been seconded. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the next item that I had was last year in setting the tax rate, we had set aside $46,730.86. So I would ask the Board to approve removing that, we'll remove that assignment of the
What's the assignment for?
We had applied $46,000, that $46,000 for taxpayer relief last year, so we're just asking to remove that. So we'll add it back and that gets us to the $837.
So second.
All right, we have a motion, it's been seconded. Any questions, discussion, debate? Hearing and seeing none. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. The next item in setting the rate was, and we have this conversation every year on the unassigned fund balance. 10% is what the Board, 10% to 15% was the range that the Board adopted many years ago in fund balance. So I was recommending through the calculation to maintain that 10% reserve. So I would ask for the Board's approval to maintain the unassigned fund balance at 10% of revenues to provide working capital.
Alderman DePoy.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to set that at 9% and not 10%. Use that 1% to go to taxpayer relief, please.
I'll second for debate.
All right, so we have a motion and it has been seconded for debate to reduce the unassigned fund balance from 10% to 9%.
So if that happens, Mary, do we have a scenario that lays that out?
I do have a.
I guess I'll say that we, we discussed the 10% to 15%, so we don't get into a deficit spending, which we have not. And you know, those type of things of having to increase our borrowing, which we have not. So I think that needs to be stated upfront, whether we do this or not. At least we're always stayed in a good financial spot. So do we have a scenario for 9%? What it does to impact the fund and what it does to impact the tax rate?
Um, I'll first, I'll give you the number for the tax rate, but then I'll give you the reason that I want to stay at 10%.
Sure.
That would reduce the municipal tax rate by $27.50 for the year. So the annual, the impact, quarterly impact to the taxpayer for the total would be $40.19. So that would be a reduction. But I did think about it because I want to give back what we can and I.
Mary, that's based on a $150,000 house, right?
That's on a $150,000 home.
Gotcha, okay.
Yep. We have, as you know, we have some significant tax appeals in process right now. The Heritage Family Credit Union Tax Appeal on College of St. Joseph. If that appeal goes at the lower end of target there, that could be a significant expense, unbudgeted expense to the city. Leaving that 10% gives us some room. We also, as we hear in the news, there's so much more still unknown on COVID. If we were to shut down again, restaurants shutting down, we have some pretty good revenue forecasts, thinking that we're open and we're back to normal. But the what if is like, makes me think we should stay at the 10%. And just to keep that little bit of reserve, we're giving a lot back this year and I'd like to be able to have something to give back next year, so hopefully, but that would be my argument to stay with the 10%.
Yeah, Mayor Lehrer, if you'd like that.
Yeah, I'd like to go in real quick. I just want to back up what Mary's saying. You know, traditionally, I would have supported this, jumped right on to 9%. But looking at the overall picture in the next, let's say, six to 12 months, I have concerns alongside what Mary has just said, along with, you know, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, I have no idea where that's going. Workers' compensation, same thing. There's some hard costs, fuel oil. We just locked in a number which is significantly higher than what we paid last year, $8.90. And we do 75,000 plus gallons. We locked it at 100,000 gallons. So you have, you put those all together and it makes a scenario where I would feel a lot more comfortable if we had that and it would help the taxpayers, I think, in the next year. I understand exactly what you're doing this year and like I said, I would have jumped on that in a heartbeat, but I just, there's so many unknowns in the next few months. I just, I just have a hard time supporting that. So I, I think for this year, we should stay at the 10%.
Alderman DePoy.
So, Mr. President, I just want to point out that I put that motion on for debate so that we can have this discussion and find out, you know, what the average household of 150,000 saves $40 a year. You know, you go to a $300,000, they're saving $80 a year. What's the total amount on that? Is the total city savings? Is it, so 40 bucks on 150, it's what, $100,000? Is it less than that, more than that?
Oh, you know what? It's, it's about, it's changing that reserve from, going from 10% to 9%. Is that what you want?
Yeah, what's the dollar?
From the $837 to $1,540,000. So there's, there's a 200, like it's, you know.
$200,000?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Alderman Davis.
Sorry, I'm not good with my numbers without my calculator.
And I don't want to withdraw the motion. I want, I want the Board to decide based on that. I mean, this, this is a way of saving the taxpayers' money as we go to the rate. Do you want to have 10% in reserves or do you want to have 9%? I mean, and I'm not arguing necessarily to have that extra 200,000 in there. Mayor brings up some good points and, and so does the treasurer, but you know, there have been a few times where we've gone to 9% and as the mayor pointed out and as Mary's pointed out, we've never gone short. That's not to say there isn't a first time for everything, but you know, do you want to save the taxpayers some money? Here's, here's a way to do it. So that's why I'm bringing this up and making the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman DePoy. Alderman Davis?
So I, I, I understand and I have always supported going to a 9%. But I think unfortunately this year, the city's coming out of COVID as well and there's an, a lot of unknowns, especially with Heritage and the issues that it's causing the city at this time. So I'm cheap and people know that and I throw every nickel I can to, to get, get some money off the tax rate and, but I'm just, I do have the same concerns. I've talked with Mary quite a bit. I talked with the mayor to see, you know, could we take 1%? How impactful was 1%? How devastating could it be, 1%? And I think they just feel that it may not be at all, but we don't know that and so it's probably safe to prepare for the unknown and then maybe next year reap those benefits on the other side and hopefully with the schools as well, there'll be a significant decrease in taxes.
Thank you, Alderman Davis. Alderman Russo.
And I've been agreeing with Alderman Davis quite a lot here tonight, but as she just said, you know, only I'm going to reword it a little bit. And Madam Treasurer, can we find 1% if we were to cut this? If six months from now, you come to us and say, I need money? Just, just to kind of reverse your question, can, can we find 1% if we, if we had to? If we made a mistake? In other words, if we made a mistake and Alderman DePoy's motion didn't work out and this 9% motion fails us and we're 1% short, could we find the money?
If we were 1% short, I believe that next year, the taxpayers might suffer a little bit more in handing them, delivering a larger tax increase.
Right.
And doing, leaving it in the, at the 10%, I'm hoping then next year, if we're at this place where we're setting the tax rate, we could move to a 9% and, and be able to deliver savings. And trying to, it's trying to forecast what we're doing in '22, but also trying to mitigate some of that increase maybe in '23.
So you're saying maybe there'd be like a loan to, to, to get us through and then the taxpayers would be paying interest possibly on that?
No, I'm not. I'm saying that we, dropping to 9%, I'm afraid that next year, we won't be able to give offset. We're giving offset of $837,000 this year. I'm hoping that next year, faced with this question, we might be able to drop it to 9% and deliver some reduction there, so.
Tough question.
Yeah, it is. This is the toughest part of it.
I don't work with it all the time. I've told you guys, you know, I don't do this stuff all the time, so you know, that's where I, that's where we have to think.
Alderman Dungus.
So just for hypothetical, if there's this 1% left over at the end of the year, which is approximately 200,000, that's the only money available left, so we don't spend that 1%, that's a $200,000 offset for 2023.
Yeah, if everything, that would be in a perfect world where our revenue comes in spot on, our expenses, you know, so.
Crystal ball.
So then I think that leaving that at 10%, it's going to give us an opportunity next year if we need to lower it. We're not, we're still in a fairly good place, you know.
Add Alderman DePoy and then Alderman Gillum.
So folks, one of the things that I would argue is in a COVID year, we were $837,000 to the plus. Okay, that's four times what this 1% does. Okay, four times in a COVID year where revenues, you know, in the world we lived in last year would have been down. Okay? We had excess revenue. That was right out of the treasurer's mouth. So if we have excess revenue and $837,000 in surplus, I don't think that 1% is going to do, is going to destroy the city. I understand higher fuel prices. I understand, you know, well, maybe the police department begins hiring, but that, the chief was in here and that doesn't look likely at all. We're going to have to fund a little extra in the overtime, but again, if you want to do a $200,000 return to the taxpayers, when we have $837,000 in surplus, here's a chance to do it. I'm going to vote in favor of it. I'm not going to lose any sleep if it doesn't pass, but you know, I think that it's something that, you know, you could think about and say, hey, you know what? I'll roll the dice and say that we're not $200,000 over budget next year, being that we were $837,000 under budget this year. Thank you.
I'll vote, Mr. Chairman.
I have a couple of people up still, but then, yes, absolutely. Alderman Gillum.
Thank you. I'm with you on this, but then I'm not with you on this. I've been, I've been in business where I've been through a crisis because we didn't plan a little bit better and I have to agree with the treasurer. We need to insulate ourselves a little better because restaurants are not doing well. Your meals and rooms tax is not going to come in as bad, as good as I think it's going to come in because everybody's having a real tough time right now. They're only at half capacity in most of these restaurants and getting help. Correct. Your, your parking fund is not working really well. Your, your parking fund is not working really well. We're going to have to do something with cops eventually, and we're probably going to have to raise fees to get cops in, to hire them. So, I'm not willing to gamble. I'm with you. It was last year, but this year, price of oil, price of, all the things are going up, and inflation might go up. So, I'm not willing to gamble. I want, I'd like to be at a safe place. If we have a backup, something happens, it's there. Next year, that's a different story. Once we go through the year, I'm with you on that, we'll take that one cent back.
Take two cents next year.
Or whatever. But I, I, I think, I think I can't gamble with the taxpayer. I mean, we need to protect them. And we need to protect, we need to have a little wiggle room in case something goes sideways, and we'll protect them. That's my only fear.
Thank you, Alderman Gillum. Alderman Neary?
Yeah, just a quick point to that, and, and I know newer members, so I respect sort of the history there. But, you know, I think we should take the win with this eight hundred thousand and say, one, the, this, this surplus came with a little bit of luck, a little bit of good accounting, and then a mayor that really said, "We got to make some cuts across the board." I think we should take that win and not try to get blood from a stone, because there's two scenarios here. One, it gets better, or one, it gets worse. And if it gets better, great, and if it gets worse, then we're kind of holding the bag. And it seems like, why gamble? Let's reassess the situation next year. But, I mean, I'm of the mind where, you know, we made these cuts in the name of COVID, we should be looking to restore the budget to the previous pre-COVID condition and get our departments more money again. So, you know, yes, take the win with the surplus, but I think we should have a plan to where we're going to be, again, fully funding and not only concerned with a lower tax rate, which should be the goal, no doubt, but we still have services. We just heard a letter, you know, there's deficiencies on Route Seven and City Hall. There are real logistical expenses to those things. So, I think, you know, just as, you know, the education rate balancing the sort of quality of life that we can provide here in Rutland with the savings is that beautiful act, and I think we hit that mark this year, so let's not mess with it.
Thank you, Alderman Neary. I have Alderman Davis, followed by Alderman Dungus.
So, I think, um, I think we have to look, as a board, we have to look long-term. And, um, we all sit in the Channel Fifteen studios, and when we're running for reelection, and we say, we're going to, you know, we're going to work to get the grand list up, but, and that's true, and we do, but there's limited opportunities for that, and we know that. There's not a lot of, uh, big business that's going to come in here, so a lot of it's personal property and things like that. So, I think we have to look at revenues. We have to look at how do we get revenues up? Because that's how the taxpayers are going to see some relief, is if we're bringing more revenues into this city. And I think, just to Alderman Neary's point, um, the leadership, the administration, the Treasurer have done a tremendous job, um, saving money through this budget. And I think we have to look at that again, that we are truly funding for what we need, not for what we want, but for what we need. And, um, and I'll, I'll choose the police in case, because we know that they're funded at X number, and then we know they're not going to meet that number. So, that adjustment has to occur, because the taxpayers pay for that all year long, and it's not going to be filled and benefited. So, it's an unfair cost to add to the taxpayers. And so, I think we have to think long, longer term, and that's revenue.
Thank you, Alderman Davis. Alderman Dungus?
Thank you very much. So, um, Mary, if I remember correctly, earlier this year when we were presenting, I think it was a quarterly Treasurer's report, you said that a part of the reason there was such a surplus is because of the cut in spending, the, the holdback on spending because of COVID. And the idea of that would be that we were probably in a surplus because the tax income and the other revenues didn't decrease as we had potentially expected them to, right?
Correct, yeah.
So, to Alderman DePoy's point, if those things continue down the line, we get to leverage this surplus to meet the needs of the budget this coming year, we may not need that one, additional one percent, um, now, but then that can roll over to the following year, just like this eight hundred thousand is rolling over now. And that continues to give us a buffer. But we will continue to spend, and especially for the police department, from my understanding, if they don't hire those seven people, there's a lot of overtime to be paid, right? And we just agreed in a previous meeting that we need to, to make sure that that's done in an appropriate manner. So, I do, I do think that we need to probably stay at the ten percent, and I do agree that a buffer is, is necessary to, to protect the taxpayers. I think that's a great comment.
Thank you, Alderman Dungus. Alderman Russo?
Yes, a lot we've covered tonight. First of all, we're in next year's budget, and that's already been set, and we already did that. So, all those numbers are out there. We have to be a positive group, and, and my dad would talk about how time flies. It was a year ago that you couldn't get in businesses, they were closed. You couldn't get near people without masks and gloves on a year ago. And things are moving along, and the world's opening up, and restaurants are opening up, and Alderman Davis is right, there's, there's things going on. We've opened up some new businesses in Rutland, or at least I've attended them. My business is doing terrible, media is doing terrible, Rutland doesn't market itself. The city of Rutland doesn't market with me, and any of the businesses and the RRA don't even know I exist, and I've done more for downtown Rutland than any media, as far as I'm concerned. But anyway, um, the thing is, is that, uh, there, there is a lot of positive things going on in the city, a lot of marketable things going on. And a year from now, I think we're going to be looking at a whole much, much better city. I know we, we've got another, um, what do they call it, pandemic or something possibly going on. A lot of us have all been, been vaccinated twice or whatever, but nobody seems to be overly worried about it, but we, let's charge ahead here, let's look forward, let's seem to, apparently the theaters are sitting there, and we're, we're hopefully the redevelopment authorities looking to get those filled up or whatever. But there's a lot of, lot of positive things, and I, I still support Alderman DePoy's, you know, idea of just give a little break. I'm having a tough time, like I said, my business is doing bad. And I don't know, and there's a lot of marketing companies that aren't doing that well, and I don't know, it's, it's, it's a struggle to pay taxes right now, it's a struggle to pay bills right now, and there are a lot of companies like mine, and any break that you could give us would be appreciated. But the, the thing is, is, uh, you know, let's, let's try, let's try to do something, and I still believe that we can go back out and say, "We'll find the money," and if it's going to cost, I don't think it's going to cost more, because I think the city's going to be doing that much better a year from now, that we'll, we'll be able to help these people, and, and I just don't, I think that's a scare. I don't think we're, we're going to be that bad a shape a year from now, and I, I just got a really good feeling for Rutland. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Russo. So, we have a motion, and it's been seconded, to reduce the unassigned fund balance from ten percent to nine percent. Is there any further discussion, debate, or questions?
Roll call.
If not, Alderman Russo has requested roll call vote, so we'll turn it over to Clerk Peck.
Alderman Russo.
We're voting for the nine percent, right? Yes.
Alderman Franco?
No.
Alderman Savage?
No.
I didn't hear, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Sorry, no.
No, thank you. My old ears here. Alderman Neary?
No.
Alderman Talbot?
No.
Alderman Dungus?
No.
Alderman Gillum?
No.
Alderman Clifford?
Alderman DePoy?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
No.
Looks like we have eight no, two yes. Motion fails.
Motion fails, eight to two. So, Treasurer Markowski, back to you. I believe you had an original request to set the unassigned fund balance at ten percent?
At ten percent of revenues to provide working capital, yes.
So moved.
Right? We have a motion, it's been seconded. Is there any discussion, debate, questions on this? Hearing and seeing none, would all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Treasurer Markowski.
Okay, so, um, I did want to point out before my final recommendation, just so that folks are aware, um, in looking at the numbers, we're also dealing with, I mean, we've had a good year, like, uh, Alderman DePoy said, we've had a good year, we're also dealing with a decline in grand list. Grand list was down five million, um, surprisingly, most of it due to a personal property decline in, uh, personal property tax. And also, we had the, uh, purchase of the gymnasium, which brought the, uh, property, but I did want to note that in dealing with the numbers. So, there's so much involved in the tax rate of all of the moving parts. So, uh, the final recommendation that I would make is, oh, well, I have two actually, because we have to formally, I would formally ask the board to, uh, approve assigning eight hundred thirty-seven thousand, six hundred seven dollars, um, in fund balance for FY-22 tax relief.
So moved.
Right, we have a motion, it's been seconded. Is there any discussion, debate, questions? Hearing and seeing none, would all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Treasurer Markowski.
Okay, and the final, um, recommendation that I have is to approve a municipal tax rate of one point seven six six for FY-22.
Which I may, if I may, just Chairman.
Alderman Davis.
That this is an annual increase of four dollars and thirty-four cents.
On a hundred and fifty thousand.
And I'll move that, on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, and I'll move that motion.
Second.
All right. We have a motion, it's been seconded. Is there any discussion, debate, or questions on this? Hearing and seeing none, would all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Okay, and then for the record, uh, the, uh, homestead education tax rate would be set at one point six four zero two zero, set by the state, but just for the record for this board.
So moved.
Uh, second.
Uh, we have, we have a motion, it has been seconded. Is there any discussion, question? Alderman Davis?
So, I think it should be clear, and I apologize, but I think it should be clear that this is results in an increase of a hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents annually on a property excess at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Alderman DePoy?
And me, speaking for myself, and maybe Alderman Davis will piggyback on this, we re, we recognize that that's not due to significant increased spending locally. It's the state setting this rate, and there's not much we can do about it here. We could vote no on it, which we tried.
We tried to do that once.
Couple of years, and we were pretty much poo-pooed on that, and told, "You can't do that, you got to, you got to fund it." Well, I can vote no if I want to, and that's why I'm here, so, just to keep that in mind, you can all vote no on this rate.
That's why I'm here.
And, and, and these, these two guys don't have a job at that point, because they don't have, there's no money going over there, so. But anyways, I, I do stand by my, my motion at one point six four oh two oh.
Thank you, Alderman DePoy. Any further discussion, debate, or questions? Alderman Dungus?
I'll just echo what was said earlier, um, there's some significant opportunity for the city of Rutland to get this rate reduced due to changes in the way that, that per student, uh, rate is calculated, and I think that anybody who's paying attention, listening, watching on TV, whatever it happens to be, um, needs to write their local representative, pick up the phone, give them a call, and get that done. It's not just for here, it's for other areas in the state too, but it's important that we put that information out there, so that things are calculated for the equity of the students in Rutland City.
Thank you, Alderman Dungus. Alderman DePoy?
Yeah, and one thing, I mean, we did bring up the, uh, the personal property of businesses, and I certainly, I know that we were down in personal property in the businesses and everything. I'm hope, my hope is, is that we, as we break from COVID and get over this, um, that the property in these businesses begins to go up, the taxable property, because that just means that people are beginning to bring, um, you know, whether it be manufacturing equipment, whether it be, you know, coffee makers at a coffee shop. It's all stuff that, um, they're bringing in to make money for themselves, make livings, and it's all stuff that, you know, in this world that we live in, it's revenue for the city as well. And hopefully, those numbers do go up and increase the grand list. And, you know, on, on the other side of that, at ninety-three, I think I saw the CLA, and nine, about ninety-three percent, um, that's a tough thing, because we're talking almost twenty years. There are communities that went below the ma, state mandate of twenty percent, um, years and years ago, and have had multiple, multiple, several times, they have, uh, reassessed their properties. Rutland City hasn't had to do it since oh-five, I think it was completed in oh-six. That, that, so, we're talking fifteen, sixteen years where, and we're only at ninety-three percent. Other communities went to eighty percent and had to reassess.
But I think some.
You know.
I think some of it are what houses are selling for that really are not true costs. So, people are coming up here and paying a lot of money for a house who may be assessed for, you know, eighty-five thousand dollars, a hundred and ten thousand dollars, and they're paying a lot more.
They're not paying for that house in Rutland City though, that's the problem.
Yeah, so, you know, I don't know, I think that'd be a, a, a discussion with Katie, the assessor, to see where we are, and, um, you know, Barry up to this point has said, "No reappraisal, we're not in the market for it at this point, because it won't, because our majority is residential property, you have to pick the right time to reappraise, otherwise the, the residents get the hit rather than the businesses." And I don't mean that's a good thing either, but, um, you want that balance, and you don't want it all onto one side. And so, you know, I don't know if that's changed. That would be a discussion to have Katie come in and have a conversation with us.
Thank you, Alderman Davis. Any other questions, discussion, debate? If not, we have a motion that has been seconded. Would all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Okay, well, thank you, um, on the tax rate, but I would note, um, bills, we'll get the bills in the mail, the FY-22 tax bills next week, with the first installment due on the thirty-first of August. It's a little confusing because we have the fifteenth, but the first installment, August thirty-first.
Thank you, Treasurer Markowski.
Do you need us to approve the non-residential homes, or non-residential rate, or is that just, approve it or no?
We can state it for the record for the minutes. Uh, yeah, thank you, we should probably. So, the non, uh, homestead tax rate, one point seven two six one zero.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion, it's been seconded. Is there any discussion or debate on the non-residential homestead tax rate? Hearing and seeing none, would all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
And of note, that would be, uh, the, the total tax rate that we've approved on a non-re, non-residential is going to be a quarterly increase of eleven dollars and seventy cents. So, this year, the non-residential getting a little bit of a break. Last year, it was quite different.
Thank you, Treasurer Markowski.
Thank you.
All right. We are still under miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business. Is there any new business to come before the board?
No, no, not yet.
I'm seeing none, so I will hand it over to our city attorney.
Okay, well, the first, uh, the executive session shouldn't be too long. Uh, it's a motion to find premature general public knowledge regarding pending litigation, which the city is a party, would clearly place the city at substantial disadvantage, because the discussion will divulge the city's strategy and such pending litigation. Will include confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the city.
So moved.
Second.
Right, we have a motion, it's been seconded. Would all those in favor please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
And a motion to enter into executive session with the inclusion of the city attorney, treasurer, and mayor to discuss pending litigation as allowed under Title I, Section three thirteen A one E, and Title I, Section three thirteen A one F.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. Would all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, we'll stand down briefly, clear the room.